I'd like to call to order the Doylestown Borough Council meeting for Monday, February 26. Everyone, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We have a few special presentations tonight. Madam Mayor, so the floor is all yours.
So I have the privilege to be community honoring two people for their service to the community. One is for membership on the Fannie Chapman pool board, and the other is for serving on Borough Council and putting up with the likes of us. So Robert Schaefer.
Thank you. This is an appreciation for your dedicated service as a member of the Board of Managers of the Fannie Chapman Swimming Pool from 2018 to 2023.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to thank the board that I worked with over that time. I want to especially thank Caroline for all of her help over the years. And it was a pleasure to serve, but we saw a lot of challenge, like everyone did, between COVID and all the sort of health regulations that we had to go. And I, we're very thankful to have the manager that we have now. And I also want to call to mind Jim because of all the work that he had done over the time as a pool manager. So, like I said, happy to serve, and I'm sure I'll be probably called back when it opens up again. So, thank you very much.
And then next is our environmental and bird specialist and advocate from council, Wendy Margolis.
In appreciation for your dedicated service as a Borough Councilperson representing Ward One from 2013 to 223. Thank you.
In the spirit of award season, I'm going to say a few thank yous. Please don't play me off. First of all, thank you, Mayor West, for everything. Mayor West and former Councilman Lou White, who's here tonight, get the credit, and some may say the blame, for asking me to join council in the first place in 2013. Up until then, there had not been a representative from Maplewood for 30 years. It's been my privilege to represent Maplewood and all of Ward One on council for more than 10 years. I'd also like to thank all the residents who have been so supportive of me and my efforts on behalf of the environment, efforts such as promoting the use of native plants and trees to provide conservation corridors for the benefits of pollinators and wildlife, incorporating more environmentally friendly landscaping practices in the parks, including reducing the use of pesticides and herbicides, and eliminating single-use plastic bags and increasing recycling. I particularly like to thank Phil Ellinger for accepting my suggestion to purchase the combination trash and recycling stations that are now in the parks and all over town, which are kind of like my monuments. I would also like to thank the council members and the board and commission members who worked with me over the years and supported my efforts, as well as the incredibly hard-working staff at Borough Hall and Public Works. Doylestown is very fortunate indeed to have such dedicated and capable people working so hard every day to keep our beautiful town so great. And finally, I don't have any family anywhere nearby, but I invited and would like to thank some of the people who helped me with my campaign, taught me how to run for office, and worked with me on my campaigns. Julie Kimmel's here. She's our committee person from Ward One, and Lou White, and Lisa, and Pete. Pete, what'd you say? Peter. Sorry. I learned so much, and it's my sincere hope that women will run, more women will run for Borough Council. We need you. And it's one of the most educational and rewarding things I've ever done. Thank you so much. Thank you all.
Give the mayor a moment to get back up here. The next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes from our January 22 council meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move.
That was a motion from Mr. Brown.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Kinney. And any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Mayor, do you have a report for us tonight?
Yes, I have a report this evening. The DART Committee held our quarterly meeting in February. At this meeting, Vince Volby presented the annual report for 2023. The DART now serves six municipalities, including Chalfont, Doylestown, and New Britain boroughs, plus Doylestown, New Britain, and Warrington townships. Our municipality partners, as well as the Mercer Museum, Discover Doylestown, Delaware Valley University, the County Theater, and the County of Bucks, all provide the match for our major funding that comes from PNDOT via SEPTA. The DART South was introduced in September 2023, and ridership for 2023 was the Doylestown DART 14,300, which is about half of the ridership pre-COVID, but that is in line with transportation services declines nationwide. The DART West had 2,440 riders, an 85% increase over 2022. DART South had 600 riders. This four-month figure is better than the first four months of the DART West Shuttle service, and the Courthouse Shuttle had 30,600 riders. Senior ridership averages 66%. Marketing firm Halibut Blue has been retained to reintroduce DART and address the ridership for the Doylestown DART. This past Saturday, February 24, the YWCA Bucks County, Bucks County Opportunity Council and Family Service Association of Bucks County held their second coldest night of the year walk to support programs and services for those experiencing homelessness and hunger in the county. The walk started at the courthouse, and there were several paths through, and people walked through Doylestown and concluded at the James Law House. We want to thank those organizations for raising awareness for an important cause. 200 people walked and 40 people volunteered. And I'd like to thank Councilwoman Popkin for representing us there, and Councilman Larry for taking pictures. And last, this year's flying by, with Easter on March 31, Discover Doylestown and our businesses are organizing an Easter egg hunt to run from March 10 to the 30th, and the Easter Bunny will visit our town on March 24. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Public safety, Mr. Frederick, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yes, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. This is authorization to advertise ordinance prohibiting the retail sale of dogs and cats. Attached, please find the above referenced ordinance drafted by the Borough Solicitor. The proposed ordinance prohibits the retail sale of dogs and cats in Doylestown Borough, designed to decrease the demand for animals bred at puppy and kitten mills. The ordinance would not affect residents' ability to obtain a dog or a cat directly from a rescue, shelter, or hobby breeder. No existing businesses in a borough would be impacted by the ordinance, which is endorsed by the Humane Society and the SPCA. The Public Safety Committee is recommending that council authorize and advertise, authorize the advertising of the ordinance. If council wishes to follow the recommendation, it can do so by motion, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Brown, I think it was. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We also have the Doylestown Fire Company report, which you all have in your packet, and that is the end of my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick. Public Works and Administration, Mr. Brown, what do you have for us tonight?
Quite a bit tonight. The Public Works agenda is pretty full. The first thing we will do is go over the two-year landscape maintenance bids for 2024 and 2025. On Tuesday, January 23, 2024, bids were open for the 2024-2025 two-year landscape maintenance contract. It is recommended that the borough award the base bid to the lowest bidder. Below is a tabulation of the bids, as you can see on the screen and in your packets. The Public Works Committee reviewed the bids and is recommending council award the bid to Gorkhan Incorporated at a price of $83,100, conditioned upon receipt of a properly executed performance bond and compliance with the bid specifications. And I move that we approve this.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Kinney, I believe. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The second one is the 2024 milling bids, and of course, anything that has to do with street repairs is always a big thing for our committee. On Wednesday, January 31, 2024, bids were open for the milling of roads for the 2024 paving season. It is recommended that the borough award the base bid to the lowest bidder, Miller Soil Solutions LLC. The tabulation of bids is on the screen. The Public Works Committee reviewed the bids and is recommending council award the bid to Miller Soil Solutions LLC at a price of $33,982.98, conditioned upon receipt of a properly executed performance bond and compliance with the bid specifications. And I so move.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frederick. Any questions or comments from any members of the council?
Yeah, I have just one question. What was last year's bid? Forty?
It was in the 40s, but the areas.
Different areas.
Apples to apples. Give me an apple to apples.
Thank you.
This is a very good price, based on what we estimated, as was the landscape bid.
And just for anybody, the bid to the lowest contractor was reviewed by the borough engineer and approved as well.
Any other questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And the last piece of action is the municipal bid auction results of this year. The borough periodically sells surplus vehicles and equipment in auction, and usually via the municipal bid auction website. On Tuesday, February 20, 2024, auctions closed on four units, and the borough received bids on the following items. Number one is a 45-foot construction trailer. The high bid was $4,650 by Golschen Chabra. Number two was the 2004 F-150, $8,200 was the high bid by Daniel Peters. Number three was the 1998 GMC Diesel one-ton dump truck, $5,200 high bid by Jeremy Zekman. And number four was the 2000 GMC Sonoma pickup truck, a $3,800 high bid by Mark Bone. The details of the vehicles are in the, on the screen and in your packets. The full bid reports are attached, and the high bids will meet or exceed fair market value. The final bids were received after the date of the recent regular Public Works Committee meeting. In order to facilitate the closing of these sales, these are being forwarded to council for a vote of approval. If council wishes, they may carry a motion to approve the sale of these units to the highest listed bidder, subject to and conditional on the payment of the required 20% cash deposit within 10 days of the auction closing, and payment of the balance due at time of transfer. And I so move.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Kinney again. Any questions or comments from any other members of council?
Just want to note that these sales in total are approximately twice what we budgeted. Very good news.
I'd also like to give credit to our fire marshals for how well they kept that vehicle in the staggering amount it got worth.
Hearing no other comments, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Yes, sir.
James Lannan, East Hatchman Street. Just wanted to point out, the vehicles, three and four, I remember riding around in those as a summer laborer for the boroughs with a special place in my heart for those vehicles.
Thank you, James. I'm your old. Thank you, James.
Sure that helped add to the value. People became aware of that.
Hearing no other comments, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And the only other thing, the last thing for Public Works is the report, which is in your packet and on the screen, and I'll hand it over to Mr. Ellinger.
Thank you. I don't have much more to add, other than we've had several snow events, snow fighting events. At least two were significantly plowable, which is the threshold generally, and in fact, we did some hauling out of the center of town just because of the nature of that snow, rolled up into big balls instead of pushing back into nice, tidy windrows, so.
Froze solid.
I did not jinx us when I mentioned several months ago that we were ready for the snow. I would say that our responses have been excellent, so that's all I have this month.
Yes, I got to see the big snow eater in front of Bagel Barrel that morning. It was quite in operation.
It is a machine.
Quite in operation.
Yeah.
That's it for Public Works, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Community and Government Affairs, Mr. Bell, do you have anything for us tonight?
The committee did not meet. We have no action for council, but I do want to mention that the Youth Recognition Award Program nomination deadline is March 1. We will accept applications until then, and this year, we've inserted an additional day for you to get in the nomination, so please take advantage of that. Thank you, Mr. President.
One question. Was that because of Leap Year?
Oh, is it Leap Year also? You missed it.
Moving on, zoning and planning, Ms. Jarrett, what do you have for us?
We did meet this month. First on the agenda, we have the consideration of Ordinance 2024-1, regulating new driveway access on borough streets. Attached, please find the above referenced driveway access control ordinance, creating design standards for driveways onto borough streets. The ordinance addresses site distance, channelization, lane width, slopes, and other safety-related design criteria. The Zoning and Planning Committee recommends the adoption of the ordinance, and if council is in agreement with the recommendation, it may do so by motion, and I so move.
Second. 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 I didn't, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was mumbling. Any questions or comments from any members of council?
Mr. President, I just wanted to comment. It was my understanding, and I spoke to Ms. Highland, who's building and zoning, that existing properties would be grandfathered here. There's not a requirement under that existing properties have to do anything or make any changes or make any applications here. I just wanted to clarify that, and Karen did so for me, and I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next up, from the Department of Building and Zoning, we have consideration of Resolution 2024-2, updating the fee schedule. Attached, you'll find the Resolution 2024-2, which adopts a new fee schedule for 2024. The fee schedule has been updated to include the newly adopted permitting requirements for driveways, just passed. The Zoning and Planning Committee is recommending council adoption of this resolution, and if council is in agreement, the proposed resolution can be adopted by motion, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Popkin. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have consideration of Resolution Number 2024-3, setting the 2024 schedule of downtown street events that may require temporary removal of, temporary platform removal, and this is in reference to the platform dining ordinance that we put into place a couple of years ago. Attached, please find a Resolution 2024-3 establishing a list of events that may require removal of street platforms. The platform dining ordinance allows the borough to temporarily suspend licenses for certain scheduled events, as well as unforeseen emergencies. The Resolution 2024-3 sets the dates and locations for these scheduled events. Because of the various locations of the events, staff does not anticipate that any platform will need to be removed more than three times. The Zoning and Planning Committee is recommending adoption of Resolution 2024-3, and if council wishes to follow the committee's recommendation, it may do so by motion, and I so move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frederick. Any questions or comments from any members of council?
Mr. President, I just had a question about the language in paragraph number one, which I had discussed with Ms. Highland. 2024 platform dining licenses may be required to temporarily remove platforms and platform dining equipment, and I wondered if the word "required" should be changed to "suspended", and I asked the solicitor if he has an opinion about that. Because it's my understanding that these licenses are already granted.
The reference is to licensees. Licensees may be required, not licenses.
I'm sorry.
It's just a grammatical. It's the licensees that.
You're right.
Be required. If it was licenses, you'd be correct.
I'm happy to be wrong.
That extra E. It's just one E. Just a note that it does look.
That's fine. Thank you. Thank you for that.
It does look like Doylestown Inn is the only platform dining.
That's correct.
Applicant again. So no one else is willing to take the plunge, although the Doylestown Inn seems to have made a great success with it.
Any other questions or comments?
Withdraw my suggestion. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, we have the Certificate of Appropriateness for HARB recommendations. At its regular monthly meeting, the Borough of Doylestown's Historical and Architectural Review Board, HARB, recommended the following. For a sign application of 58 North Main Street for a sign, they recommended the application be approved for a certificate of appropriateness as submitted and presented for the Waters Edge Winery and Bistro. For building applications, they had 159 Washington Street for a roof. The HARB recommended that the application be approved for a certificate of appropriateness with the following conditions. The second-floor roof will be a slate-line type shingle, and the dormer and rear roofs can be architectural or three-tab shingle. And the porch roof will be a medium bronze or slate-gray metal roof with standing seams instead of a snap cap. 110 South Franklin Street for windows, the HARB recommended that the application be approved for a certificate of appropriateness as submitted and presented. The Zoning and Planning Committee recommends that council approve the applications in accordance with the HARB's recommendation, and if council wishes to follow the committee's recommendation, it can do so by motion, and I so move.
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Popkin. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And attached in the packet is the code enforcement report and the building inspection report, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Jarrett. Environment and Rec, Ms. Wykoff is not here tonight. Dennis, are you going to cover for her?
Yes, I'm also on that committee, and the committee did meet, and we heard from Caitlin on our staff that plans are in the works and happening for the Easter egg hunt, March 30, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Rod Commons. Now, Madam Mayor, you mentioned the Easter egg hunt. Are we talking about the same Easter egg hunt?
No, I think this is happening in stores.
Oh, okay. That's what I thought.
It is a different event.
Want to clarify. Wasn't, I didn't hear, I didn't know about the one you were talking about, so. Wasn't, I didn't hear, I didn't know about the one you were talking about, so I want to make sure that they weren't the same. And, and the other, only other thing with that is it's being sponsored, the one here at Broad Commons is being sponsored by the Learning Experience of Doylestown and Class Harlan Real Estate. And there were no actionable items at the, at the ERC, so that's the end of my report.
We actually are asking council to just.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Approve the Easter egg hunt. We've never had it before, so.
Okay, then I'll read this. Thank you, John.
Don't get hauled away for having an illicit Easter egg hunt.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Wouldn't want to do that.
Some endorsement from someone who's in charge that we should, we can do this. And I'll note that because of the sponsorships, there is no cost to the taxpayer for this. We just need someone to wear the suit and.
You went.
We'll be doing measurements.
I think.
Up for it. Well, volunteers take one step forward.
Do you volunteer from the public?
We would, we would ask for a vote to just approve this as an, as a.
Should I read this? Should I read this for the record?
There's a memo in the.
I think, I think a vote to approve the Easter egg hunt, as indicated, would be fine.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Popkin, or by Jen, I'm sorry, Ms. Jarrett. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Water Utility, Mr. LaRone, again.
Thank you. We, we did not meet in, we did not, not meet this month, and we will meet next on March 12th, and we will have a busy agenda, so that's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Finance and Pension, Ms. Popkin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance and Pension did meet this month, and the first item that we have is a consideration of Resolution Number 2024-1. This would be to authorize prepayment of certain invoices. And attached in the packet, you will find Resolution 2024-1, and this authorizes the prepayment of certain invoices prior to the regularly scheduled approval at each monthly council meeting. This is a housekeeping item, and it will update Resolution 2022-2, which was two years ago. During the course of the month, there is often a need to pay an invoice outside of those approved to the council meeting. An example would be a vendor invoice with an early due date or a refund. Limits are set on the maximum amount that can be approved by the Borough manager. Any invoices outside these limits would be reviewed and approved by the council president. Any and all payments paid prior to the council meeting are detailed and approved through the prepaid invoice list provided with each council packet. While there is not a quorum present at our Finance and Pension meeting on February 8th, the members present are recommending that council adopt Resolution 2024-1. If council wishes to follow this recommendation, it can do so by motion, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by, I think it was Jen again. Okay, Ms. Jarrett. Any questions or comments from any members of council?
Just a question, Mr. President. What's the limit that the Borough manager can approve?
They're listed next to the items on the, on the resolution itself. If you see in parentheses.
I see, okay.
Each has a different limit.
All right.
Any other questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. The second item is the finance report with the monthly invoices and bills to be paid, which total $803,098.91. And I would make a motion to approve this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Kinney. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Okay, personnel, it's my turn. Long-term Park and Recreation Board member Jill Schweizer submitted her resignation on February 5th, 2024. During the recent round of board and commission interviews, Matthew Reese of the Economic Development Advisory Board requested appointment to the Park and Rec Board. Unfortunately, there was not sufficient vacancies to accommodate his request at that time. The Personnel Committee is recommending that Matthew Reese be appointed to the Park and Recreation Board to fill the now vacancy created by Ms. Schweizer's resignation for a partial term ending December 31st, 2026. Council wishes to follow the Personnel Committee's recommendation. It may do so by motion, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second by Ben, Mr. Bell. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Professionals report, Mr. Darty, you have anything for us?
Thank you. I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay, you have anything for us?
Thank you, no report.
Chief, anything for us?
Thank you, no report.
Okay. President's report. Just a quick comment. We had a relatively mild winter, with the exception of maybe the last couple of events, but, and in, in traveling around town, I saw a lot of activity in our parks, especially in the new park across the street. Almost every time I walk by there, there's somebody in there. I'm anticipating it's going to get a lot more activity as the weather, as spring gets here and we get the nicer weather. Just a reminder that we have plenty of park space in, in town. Please enjoy it. Thank you. Any items of old business? Any items of new business? Open public comment, nobody signed up, so we have nothing there. Do we have an executive session?
We do. We have an executive session to discuss a personnel matter.
Okay, and will we be taking action when we come back?
I do not believe so, no.
Okay, so we will, we will adjourn. May I obtain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
You just suspend. We come back and adjourn, right?
No, you, you have to adjourn, then come back.
Oh, okay.
We can adjourn now if we're not going to take any action.
Yeah. Okay.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make such.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
There is some material under the executive session. It's in your packet, you might want to bring with you for this.
Hi, I'm Nick Tartaglia, Lieutenant from the All Volunteer Doylestown Fire Company, speaking on behalf of our members. We're looking for new people to join our team. Could that be you? You've just seen why our members are our number one asset, and together we make a powerful team. We're your friends and neighbors, but when you call 911, we're the ones who drop everything to answer the call. Just like you, our diverse volunteers work normal jobs, attend schools, and care for their families. But together, we share our talents and skills for a common mission. In fact, maybe you know some of us.
My name is Lynn Laurie Westover. I'm a cell biologist for a large drug discovery company, and I serve to help my neighbors in their time of need.
My name's Grant Castor. I'm head of commercial operations for a specialty pharmaceutical company, and I serve to give back to my hometown.
My name is Rachel Laux. I'm studying to become a veterinarian, and I volunteer to continue my family tradition as a third-generation firefighter.
I'm Steve Downs, and I'm a teacher and a professor at LaSalle University, and I became a firefighter to live my faith.
We are the Doylestown Fire Company.
Aside from our different individual lives, we are all professionally trained firefighters and members of this close-knit firefighting family. We need more people to join our team. We'll ensure you have the necessary skills, knowledge, and equipment to succeed. Join us and share our enthusiasm in providing this vital service to the community. To explore whether firefighting might be a good fit for you, please contact us or visit your local firehouse for more information.
Your friends, your family, and your neighbors count on us. Can we count on you?